Members. We now proceed to session seven of the special meeting on environment. We have with us the Secretary for Environment and his team. Before we open the floor to questions, I will first invite the Secretary for Environment to make some brief opening remarks. Secretary for Environment. Chairman, I would like to brief members on the part of the estimates relating to the Environment Bureau and the keyfold side of our work in the new financial year. First, on allocation of more resources. The government has been allocating more resources to environmental protection and puts emphasis on better air quality, cleaner sea water, and better management of solid waste to enhance the quality of living of the community. In this financial year, the total allocation to E N B and my departments in my portfolio is about sixteen point one billion dollars, which is twenty-one percent, or about two point eight billion dollars more than the revised estimate for twenty thirteen to fourteen. Of the total allocation of sixteen point one billion dollars, about six point eight billion dollars is recurrent expenditure, up nine hundred billion dollars from the revised estimate for twenty thirteen to fourteen. The additional provision is mainly for meeting the operational costs of the newly completed sewage treatment facilities and district cooling system, taking forward waste reduction and recycling initiatives such as operating community green stations, managing surplus public fuel for reuse and reviewing the regulatory framework for the electricity market. As regards the number of posts in E N B and the Environmental Protection Department, there will be an increase of ninety-four posts in twenty fourteen to fifteen. The provision in twenty fourteen to fifteen for non-recurring expenditure capital account and cash flow for properties under Capital Works Reserve Fund is about nine point three billion dollars, representing an increase of about one point nine billion dollars over the revised estimate for twenty thirteen fourteen. Please be brief, because you have already provided us with the text. Please go green and be brief. The increase is mainly for implementing the Excrushia Payment Scheme to phase out pre-euro for diesel commercial vehicles and subsidizing the trial of electric buses by franchise bus companies. Now, I will briefly outline a few other areas. First, on waste management, I'm sure members understand we have a multi-pronged approach to reduce where the source, we have Food Wise Hong Kong Campaign with clean recycling, turning waste to energy improvements for more hygienic transportation and treatment of waste, so it's a five-pronged approach. On energy, we have launched a public consultation for three months in March twenty fourteen. You have already heard about our two proposals, I won't repeat them. Third point, air quality, that's of great concern to us, of course. First, we would like to reduce roadside air pollution. I would like to thank the Leshco for giving support to the facing out of some eighty-two thousand pre-euro for diesel commercial vehicles by twenty fourteen. We have launched the Excrushia Payment Scheme on the first of March to help the affected vehicle owners. On electric vehicles, you know, they are green vehicles without any tailpipe emissions. Replacement of conventional vehicles with E Vs can help improve roadside air quality and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. But the technology of electric vehicles is still under development. I would like to thank Leshco for passing the resolution to extend the first registration tax waiver for electric vehicles by three years to March twenty seventeen. We will also strengthen the supporting infrastructure for electric vehicles. We will launch a pilot scheme enabling suppliers of electric taxis to install quick chargers at car parks managed by the Transport Department. We will add about a hundred medium chargers into different districts this year. On improving harbor water quality, the government has spent seventeen point five billion dollars on stage two A of the Harbor Area Treatment Scheme. This stage two A is expected to be completed at the end of this year. All switch from both sides of Victoria Harbour will be collected for treatment at the Stonecutters Islands, which treatment works over water quality of Victoria Harbour will improve further as a result. We will also plan to carry out our consultancy study to work out practical options in the program to improve the environment of waterfront areas by tackling near-shore pollution, so that we could further enhance the quality of harbors coastal waters. We will consult stakeholders in the next few months on the consultancy study and will seek funding approval from Leshco next year. Conclusion, Chairman. The government has spared no efforts in protecting the environment and building a green community to achieve a better quality of living for all. We look forward to joining hands with different sectors of the community and Leshco to meet the environmental challenges of Hong Kong together. I and my colleagues are happy to answer questions from members, thank you. Thank you, Secretary. Questions now? So, it's the reply zero number E N B. Mr. Wong Kwok-hing, four minutes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have two questions for the Secretary. E N B three four seven. This is about light pollution. Now, we joined the switch off for an hour campaign, the switch off lights for an hour campaign, but would that be enough to resolve the light rest pollution problem? We see that there is no determination of part of government to legislate for this. In the past five years, there's been an increase in complaints about light nuisance, but it seems that the Environment Bureau hasn't yet shown any determination to tackle this problem. So, on legislating against the light pollution, is the government determined to do it? Have you set aside resources for the purpose? And during the transitional period, would you step up, follow up on light nuisance complaints made by the public? Next, E N B two one two. Recycling of plastic. Now, this is, of course, very much related to environmental protection. Recycling of plastic, there's a group of contractors who find the profits to be minimal and the cost to be high. And there's now piling up of plastic waste and we don't know what to do with them. On this question, how are you going to deal with it in the coming year? Two questions there, Secretary. Thank you for the two questions, Mr. Wong. First, on light pollution, we said earlier that there is a committee to help to conduct a consultation. The consultation has been completed, we're now collating the views. There are responses in two schools primarily. Some district councillors support legislation, but the business sector has expressed reservation. So, we are still sorting out the views and we would like to give a response soon. I think the concern is particularly about areas like Yaochimong or Wan Chai where there are old buildings and where there is a mix of both residential and commercial uses. And so residents find the signboards to be a nuisance. So, we'll see what we can do and adopt and take a targeted approach. But, of course, we will also consult, follow up with the reference stakeholders and Leshco on this issue. The other question is about recycling of plastic waste. As you know, we've adopted a multi-pronged approach in tackling waste. There is a committee set up chaired by the Chief Secretary for Administration to support the sustainable development of the recycling industry. It's not just plastic, it's about all sorts of recyclable wastes. We would like to have a comprehensive policy. Well, I know you are anxious that something be done soon. But actually, the policy on supporting recycling is complex. I know you're anxious, but there are a lot of issues still be dealt with. So, we are in close liaison with the sector. We hope that we could roll out policies that could address the problems in Hong Kong. Now, of course, one issue is land. The sector would like some support in terms of land. And also, what about the eco park? How could that help? And, you know, other training, support, and so on. So, please speak into the microphone as far as possible, Secretary. Next. Dr. Lo Kwok-wai. Dr. Lo Wai Kwok. Oh seven three and two four five. E N B oh seven three. I asked about energy efficiency, energy conservation, new energy, and so on. You know, some studies being carried out. I can see that there are some good results coming from some of the studies. They may not be of large scale, you know, like the low consumption ballast and so on, and then new high-efficiency chillers and so on. But, so you're rolling out a series of measures, but I'm worried that too many departments involved, maybe there's a salary effect. But can you take the lead? Can you make sure that these measures effective? Next is on E N B two four five. Well, we all concerned about kitchen waste or food waste. In Siu Ho Wan, Lantao, there's a proposal to build a food waste treatment facilities that could handle two hundred tons of waste each year, each day, and then we could have produced renewable fuel there. Now, Hong Kong is densely populated, there is limited demand for animal feed coming from food waste. But then, Siu Ho Wan could only handle about a few hundred tons, and we have some three thousand five hundred foot tons of food waste every day. If food waste could be turned into fish or animal feed, that would be useful. Maybe Hong Kong can make use of the feed, but what about exporting the feed to other places like the mainland? Have you tried to do that? I've talked to the sector recently, they said that they are able to produce the feed, but there's nowhere they could sell it to. So, could there be some sort of certification or testing so you could give assurance about quality and then the feed could be exported? Two questions. First one, I will defer to the Director of Electrical Mechanical Services. I'll take the second question. As you know, at the beginning of this year, we have rolled out a plan on kitchen waste. And it's a ten-year strategy. Of course, there will be the facilities at Siu Ho Wan, and there will be a series of organic resources center, and that should help to reduce food waste by about forty percent. That's an aggressive target. As you know, in Taipei, they've worked with food waste for more than a decade, and now they could still just reduce food waste by about forty percent. Now, of course, there could be public-private sector collaboration. If the private sector believes that fish feed or other animal feed could be made from food waste, we welcome their proposals. You know, in Chiu Wun, there is the Eco Park, there is a facility there. We've given them the land, and this, in the third quarter this year, they were able to produce fish feed from food waste there. Next, the other question. Mr. Chen. Thank you, Dr. Lo, for the question. As the government tests new products. We have rather advanced technology in testing products that are energy efficient, and the government, of course, will take the lead to use such energy-efficient products. It will also actively promote such products to the sectors concerned. With the building sector and the electrical mechanical services sectors, we all attach great importance to energy-efficient devices. Mr. Ray Chen. E N B oh one five is a question asked by Mr. Albert Chen, the use of plastic bags. The government kept asking the government, the people, to use fewer plastic bags, and there is the levy on plastic bags. But what about the government? Is it saving on the use of plastic bags? That is, the A F C D is using a lot of plastic bags in country parks. This year, the estimate is ten thousand dollars more than last year, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. You may think ten thousand dollars is a small sum, but how come there's an increase instead of a decrease? And in terms of number, every year is about two hundred and thirty thousand plastic bags. So, have you frozen the number of bags that could be used? And have you got any initiatives to reduce the use of plastic bags? Could there be any replacement for these plastic bags? And that leads to a broader question. Does the Bureau have a guideline for various government bureau and departments so that they should try to use fewer plastic bags? Like the, you know, Constitution Reform Consultation, that pan is a plastic pan. I'm not going to debate with you whether there's a need for the plastic bag. But the plastic bag is kept in a plastic, that plastic pan is kept in a plastic bag, we think is so wasteful. So, my question is, do you have guidelines for different departments?
Secretary, you would like to defer to the Director. Thank you for the question. Of course, our policy is to reduce the use of plastic bags. And the expenditure is related to inflation, because in the past few years, goods prices have been increasing, but we have been reminding our colleagues that when they use plastic bags, that they will have to fill it to the brim. But sometimes, for some climbers, that is toxic. If the pollen is blown elsewhere, then it will affect other species. And in barbecue pitch during warm days, and some of the waste, the rubbish, may disintegrate more easily or rot more easily than others. So, we would use bags and we place, we're talking about four hundred kilometers of country park, which is a vast area. Of course, we aim at reducing the use of plastic bags gradually. And in relation to encouragement given to departments to reduce the generation of waste, say for example, when it comes to public events, we ask departments to reuse the material. When it comes to the use of plastic bags, for some work, say cleaning, they need to use plastic bags. We promote waste reduction in a sense that we promote the reduction of generation of waste. We remind departments, in particular, public departments, to reduce the use of souvenirs. We remind them to reduce the generation of waste. So, can that plastic bag I mentioned be dispensed with because it is just useless? Well, but when it comes to the use of material, we will consider it's the use and its needs. Miss Alice Mack, two one four is the reply I would like to follow up on. The first question is about the expected saturation year of landfills. Has the administration conducted any studies on waste treatment? Say for example, proposed, the proposed incinerator, would they consider using the ash from incineration to turn them into products used, say for example, in a road paving? So that the pressure on our landfill will reduce that by extending the lifespan of the landfill? And the related expenditure, say for example, infrastructure projects and also compensation of parties affected? But in the reply, apart from the eighteen million of refuse collection vehicles, you don't mention about other expenditure. Is it because it hasn't occurred to you or you don't have any plans to put in place any measures or offer any compensation? And in the second paragraph of point three, it mentions about water supply to remote villages. In the proposed location of incinerator, there is a Tai Long Village in Lantao Island, and it's very close to the incinerator, but there is no water supply. In your reply, you said, you mention about, you mention about water supply. Would you consider supplying water to Tai Long Village, which is quite remote? Who is to take the question? Mr. Chen? The lifespan of our landfills depends on the amount of waste generated each day and the measures when the blueprint of waste reduction has been put in place. Some waste cannot be incinerated, maybe there are inert waste. We have done some assessments. The member mentioned about the reuse of the ash from incineration. We are exploring that. Some universities are doing studies on reusing the end product from incineration on construction. We will conduct a long-term planning this year of the future use of our landfill with technological advancement, whether we can improve in our waste management. And our goal is to reduce the amount of waste going to landfill. And in one nine one, I have mentioned about the operating cost of each landfill. When we make a funding application of the extension, I wasn't talking about the operating cost, I was talking about compensation. In relation to the funding application for the expansion of the three landfills, when it comes to project cost, it include road, supporting facilities, and all costs ancillary to the project. We take reference from other places and their experience, that they make use of the facility to contribute to the community, to make contributions to the community. Mr. Kwok-wai Kung. Two one three is the reply number. It's about a domestic and commercial sector food waste. Well, I was waiting for the figure for twenty thirteen, but unfortunately, it's not there. As we all know, food waste is an important item of waste treatment. The administration launched the Food Wise campaign, and so far, they have spent fourteen million on it. So, can you give me information to show me that whether the forty million is well-used? And how does it help to reduce the amount of food waste? Has it reduced? And another one is the reply number two one one, phase one of Eco Park. I see that one company engaging in waste factory cannot open. Why? Because of labor insurance or they cannot engage professionals to start the business? I see that there is a similar type of recycler in phase two that will soon open. How will you prevent the recurrence of what happened to the company in phase one? When it comes to Eco Park, I would defer to the P S. In relation to Food Wise campaign, well, you must understand that there is always a lead time for the figures to reflect the situation. But I can tell you now that when it comes to the general public, the penetration rate of Food Wise campaign is quite high. Even the kids can tell us that they should not be big wasters. So, when it comes to quality, we assure that the penetration rate is high. When it comes to the quantity, it will take time to cultivate, to build a culture. They have worked out the figures, about ten percent of the food waste can be reduced as a result. In relation to Eco Park for phase one company, well, it's been quite a long time. Eco Park is an important infrastructure. We require all the L S Cs to start operation. But for this particular L C, it fails to start operation because they cannot obtain the relevant operation permits or licenses. So, have these licenses or permits have been obtained? No, they don't meet the requirement, the statutory requirement to obtain the license. And we've given them quite a long time because the company is a phase one L C, and that's why in the end we have to take legal action because it's a failure to perform. A lot of the L S Cs in the Eco Park have been operating for quite some time. Sorry, the case I mentioned, you mentioned that they cannot meet a requirement. What's missing? For a recycler, of course, it depends on the type of business. There are many companies in Eco Park, say for example, those some in biofuel, waste oil, they all have to meet the requirements to obtain permits and licenses. I think this is a rather general question. We will move on. Next, Dr. Kenneth Chen is to follow up on one, reply number one oh six. In particular, the last part of the question about plastic bags. You refer to an X one. In the first phase, the number of plastic bags distributed has increased, and at the same time, we see the number of inspections has dropped. And from the reply from the, from the department, it's a team of twelve under the E P D to do the work. I'm very concerned about this. We're talking about an extension of the scheme to cover all retailers. The levy of fifty cents will be imposed. Well, how can the team of twelve be able to take up all the work, enforcement, inspection, education, publicity? So, have you conducted any analysis on the figures that there is a bounce? Is it because there is, because the enforcement action has dwindled? Or is it because they've encountered difficulties out of their expectations in their enforcement action? And in light of that, will they put in place remedial measures to drive down the number of plastic bags distributed and used? P S? In relation to the number of plastic bags distributed in prescribed retailers during the first stage, there may be many factors contributing to the increase in number. We will step up our work, say for example, publicity and education. It's been eighteen quarters, have you found out the reason why? We have not done any particular study on the figure in the two quarters. The Leshco has endorsed the extension of the plastic bag levy scheme. We will enhance our publicity and education effort because the second phase will start in April twenty fifteen. So, we will enhance our publicity and education work. In relation to inspection and enforcement, we have a team of ten responsible for enforcement. With the full coverage, it won't be just the team of ten, there will be other strategies in place, and we are working out, we're mapping out the work, and we will step up our publicity and education work. We hope that there will be a change of behavior as a result. We hope that there will be a change of behavior as a result of the extension of the coverage. Well, I think the PS doesn't know why there is an increase of plastic bags distributed. And she also mentioned about a team of ten, and there will be other measures, but there is no details given. And I think perhaps we will lose more than we gain by the extension of the scheme. There may be more plastic bags going to the landfill. I think you have to consider whether it's because there are more plastic bags used by incoming visitors. And if that is the reason, then draw reference from overseas experience because when we go traveling outside Hong Kong, we'll be reminded not to use plastic bags.
Well, on publicity and education, we've been making a series of effort, of effort, but we will be happy to report to the panel on environmental affairs. Next, Mr. Frankie Yig. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. E N B O seven nine. Twenty thirteen. In reply, it said that for dedicated gas stations on average, one hundred and three to four hundred and ten vehicles have went to these gas stations. There are just eighteen thousand taxis in Hong Kong, and some four thousand vehicles went to the same gas station, there's such a high concentration. Why is that the case? I tried to find out, they said they'd rather queue up and they wouldn't pay several tens of dollars more because of the difference in gas prices. Now, in twenty thirteen, you have an additional free stations, but twenty fourteen, there's not, there will be an additional four gas stations, but you don't have plans to add any designated gas stations. But you know, a bit of time that's important to you, maybe thirty, forty dollars doesn't mean anything but to professional drivers, thirty, forty dollars, thirty, forty dollars make a lot of difference. So why can't you consider more dedicated LPG filling stations? Another question, E N B two nine nine. Now, it's a green pilot transport assistance scheme. Now, do you have any information on the latest situation? I'd like to thank Mr. Frankie Yig for your two questions. First one, about the LPG filling stations, there are now sixty-three in Hong Kong. Twelve are dedicated ones. And for the LPG price, now the government had to help the building of the LPG filling station network, so there was no premium charge, and so that's why the gas was cheaper. But then still, we have to revert to commercial operations. We now there's some network of LPG filling stations, that's why we have no more plan to add any more dedicated LPG filling stations, but rather for new gas stations or petrol stations where the safety regulations could be met, then a quarter of the pipe should be for LPG filling purpose. So we would like to provide more LPG filling facilities to the taxis and minibus sectors. The Pilot Green Transport Fund. Now, we're supposed to discuss the item at the Panel on Environmental Affairs. Over three years, we have approved seventy-three item projects. We are talking about ninety-three billion, million dollars that have been allocated. Now, the government, you explained why there were dedicated LPG filling stations. You see that there is a price differential. Even if you provide them with more LPG filling stations, it doesn't help because they won't use them. They think thirty or forty dollars matter more. And so they rather spend time queuing up, and that causes traffic congestion. And also, you know, when there's change of shift, it's difficult to find taxi, and now all taxis are queuing up for LPG. So it's not the efficient way to use resources, I hope you reconsider it, please reconsider it. Next. Mr. Wu Chi Wei. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, two questions, E N B two four five. About the Suku Islands and Lantau Island, Southwest Park. Now, it says that the government has no plan in the coming year to do something about the coastal park there, so do you have a plan or not? To complete the statutory plan, so this place will be designated a coastal park? Because in twenty oh two, already the plan's been made. The other question is on food waste. There are now biodiesel processing plants in Hong Kong. They have difficulties in collecting waste oil. And they also have difficulties in selling the biodiesel that they produce because there are no policies to support it in Hong Kong. So the bulk of their product has to be exported. Now, we know that among food waste, there's a good potential for turning it into biodiesel or fuel. There are already local plants in this line of business, so shouldn't you come up with a policy that could support the development of such biodiesel processing plants? The Director of Agriculture, Fisheries and Conservation and Undersecretary will reply. Thank you. Western Lantau Island, the plan to turn that into coastal park? The plan remains. As I pointed out in the reply, we're still consulting local residents. And it seems that there are strong views. But over time, we have other marine conservation measures, for example, last year we banned trawling, and that's helped substantially. There are other urgent issues, like in the Brothers Islands. To support the development of the Hong Kong Chor Macar Bridge, we're going to build coastal park there. So it's a matter of priorities in preserving the marine ecosystem. So we need time to see how the marine ecosystem is being restored. Yes, it's true, these are plans still on the drawing board because we believe we need to look at the whole picture first. Do you have a timeframe? We don't have a timeframe for these two parks because it's a matter of priorities. In anti-west, you know, like Shaku Islands, there are plans for an incinerator, and there will also be a major coastal park. It's near, and then to the south, we will soon have the third runway in the airport. And there may be proposal for another coastal park. So, or marine park, so we have to look at the whole of the Lantau Island waters. We have, must not overlook the impact on fishermen. There are few and few places for fishing in Hong Kong, and there's been a major change in the operations for fishermen, that's why we need to look at it, look at the whole picture. But of course, we definitely see the merits of the two parks. Biodiesel. Give a written reply then, perhaps. Okay, fine, next. Ms. Emily Lau, Deputy Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a question for the secretary. If you wish to launch your policies, green policies, policies to deal with waste and so on? The Democratic Party, they see majority support from the public, of course, there cannot be absolute support. You can't just tell people I'll dump waste in your backyard, of course, no, people will say no to that. So you need to offer compensation allowance or whatever. So you have to tell the public what you could gain. Maybe you're not happy there are facilities near you, but at least you get something back in return, hopefully then people would accept it. Now, in the budget this year, how much is there in provisions for you to do this work? Or is it the case that there are other policy bureau involved and they don't care? But then for you, you want to push through these obnoxious facilities. So who's to in charge, or is there no bureau in charge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Ms. Lau. We have given much thought to this, we've looked at the practice in other places. The mainstream approach is to tie certain community facilities to, say, an incineration facility. Maybe there could be a green exhibition gallery, or if thermal energy could be produced, it could be used to heat up a swimming pool and so on. So that's what we could do. For the Nimuan sewage, the sludge treatment facilities, that's exactly what we're doing. What about other places, your landfills, incinerators, what compensatory measures are there? Well, that's the first step, the second step in the policy address this year is that we're going to spend a billion dollars to speed up the revitalization of those places, you know, Chang'an, Ootin, Moon Yunlong, there's several landfills there. They have been restored or reinstated. And apart from, there have been no resources to speed up the use of these sites, and that's why we set aside a billion dollars. And then we'll try to seek good proposals from relevant bodies. And then we could provide community uses there, like sports users, recreational users and so on. So we could make the most of these resources. So through the revitalization schemes, that's how we could pay back to the districts involved. Now, there are actually the three strategic landfills in these three districts, and they together make up a good number of hectares of land. Now, when you want to expand landfills, people complain a lot. And then at the same time, you tell them this is something good that we're going to give to you. So shouldn't you package them together? So the public would find out about it. And instead of just saying, no, no, you, okay, you just suffer the landfill, and your sons or your grandchildren will benefit. So how do you do it? Well, today, these days, we have a discussion going on together. That's why in the policy address this year, we have this one billion dollars for revitalizing landfills. But are you going to submit all these proposals, the compensatory proposals as well, to the Finance Committee at the same time? Well, the timeframe is a bit different for the one billion dollar plan. That takes time for us to plan it. So that's why there's going to be a huge problem, even the chairman's saying that you can't do it this way. So you have to first do the good bit first before you proceed with the undesirable bit. Next, Dr. Helena Wong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the secretary's opening remarks, he mentioned improving the harbor water quality. Of course, we support such efforts. On sewage treatment by the Drainage Service Department, especially in Kaolun West, I'd like to follow up on E N B O six one and also E N B O five four. This is questioned by Dr. Kenneth Chan. And Dr. Kenneth Chan's question, the reply is that for sewage treatment facilities and collection facilities, the figures are quite staggering. Kaolun, four point six billion cubic meters of sewage. About one time more than the sewage collected from islands, from the Hong Kong Islands and the NT. Is it because we have the stonecutters facilities? So we don't just treat sewage from Kaolun? The sewage comes also from other districts? Or is it because in Kaolun West, we have a number of wholesale markets, including the Changsha One Temporary Livestock Market? So there's cleaning every day, that's why in Kaolun, we have more sewage to treat than other districts? Is that the reason? Second question is about the Kaolun sewage collection facilities improvement works. I'm glad that you're going to invite tender for the design. So, but when can the projects be completed? Kaolun West, site number six, and Changsha One Wholesale Market, the lenses will be changed for buildings. So if there's not proper treatment of sewage, it's going to cause a huge problem. And then rainwater drains. There's an illegal connection in all districts, it's quite prevalent. If we do not deal with the sewages, we just deal with the stormwater drains, how are we going to improve the water quality of the harbor? Maybe some itaries illegally connect a sewage to the rainwater drains, so what do you do?
Thank you, thank you for the question. First, about sewage collection. When it comes to Kaolun, Hong Kong, North New Territories or Islands, the distribution represents the distribution of the respective districts. If we look at Stonecutter Islands Sewage Treatment Plant, it handles sewage from not just Kaolun, but also that from island north, especially northeast of the Hong Kong Island. But it's not. So the region, the figure you just mentioned reflects the sewage collected from that area. We are now going through the tendering process. And as to when it will complete, in general, it will take about three to four years. But it depends on our assessment after it's completed. And it's only then when we can come up with a more accurate time or figure. Mr. Ho. Thank you. Paragraph seven of the one billion recycling fund. When do you expect it will be depleted? What are the planned uses? You said that within this year, you will work out the actual operation details. But there is no timetable. And yet, you come to ask for funding application of the, in relation to the landfills and the incinerator. I think, Secretary, you've got the message loud and clear that we all think that once you've got what you wanted, you will ignore us. This one billion dollar is only a beginning. When will you announce the details? What are you waiting for? You said that in January, there will be a consultancy study about the types of ways to be covered. Now you've got a funding approval, it seems that you have taken it slow. Two, when do you think the fund will be depleted and what happens afterwards? You will rely solely on the market? Or unavoidably, the government will have to put in land, manpower and money to deal with waste other than food waste? Are you going to expand the operation of community green stations? Or is it going to be small in scale? It's not just about the use of the one billion dollars. Different political parties and legislators will take that into account when they consider how to vote on the landfill and incinerator proposal. We are now working at full steam on this. There are some still details to be worked out. We will have to consult stakeholders in the compilation of the report. And we think that we have to talk to the stakeholders more than once. Under the report, it covers a number of wastes. We hope that in the near future, we will complete our work, and of course, we will have a discussion in Legco. And as to when the fund will be depleted, I'm afraid I can't tell you today. Because the trade will have to carefully think about where they need help. And so far, they are unable to give us a clear answer. We're aware of members' wish. They wonder whether it will be continued. We need more discussion. And if you think there is a need for it to be continued, and I think we will be, we can discuss it at the next stage. Another point is one on principle. Is it the plan of the administration to kickstart the market operation using the one million and then afterwards rely solely on the market? Whether it's, whether it can make or break it? Or is it the case that in cases when it's not commercially viable, you will put in a lot of resources, put in a lot of resources to support it? Because I think there is consensus from different parties that you will just forget about us once you've got what you wanted. Under Secretary. We have yet to finish with the, finish the discussion with the trade about what is viable and whatnot. It will take more time. Mr. Tseng Kai-piu, about the landfill and the incinerator, Ellis Mark Ma asked about Tai Long Village, and I will take a wider scope to help remote villages to get water supply. What villages in what areas will be covered under the free landfills and the incinerator? And reply to 61 about the phasing out of diesel vehicles. I have two questions. First, the trade union told me that in the past, they could, they can get some money for five point five ton for thirty to forty thousand dollars for scrapping the car. But now they can only get several thousand dollars. And currently, there are about two hundred and forty, sixty-four, four hundred and twenty-six cases. And as at the end of 2013, there are about fifty-three thousand euro, four euro, five vehicles. Is it the case that they are not going to be phased out? What is your policy intention? And I'm also concerned about electricity, power's generation. And now you're talking about two consultations and one negotiation. Well, is the funding enough to take up all the work? Maybe I will take up the question about diesel vehicles, about the requirement for contractors of scrapped vehicles. There are only two simple requirements. First, when you have a valid business registration and when it is, when there is a place where the business is operated, then they can make an application to the E P D to be a registered vehicle scraper, the scraper. As at the 31st of March, there are seven hundred such operators registered with us. And I think with the free competition on market operation, there will be good services provided. And I've heard from some operators that the supply has increased in the past. Maybe a year is just several thousand vehicles. And now there is an increase in supply which will affect the price. Of course, we will only allow operators with the capability to be registered. About euro four, euro five diesel vehicles. And now we don't have the plan to mandate a phase out, the phasing out of these vehicles. What about supply of water? In relation to waste treatment facilities, we don't have any plans to supply water for nearby villages. But when we launch the project, we understand that there are certain demands from nearby villages. And we, and I believe that the Water Supplies Department will follow that up. There are more questions about the review of the power market mechanism. And, well, we, we have four additional colleagues. Three have already joined us, one in the coming year. And there is already a team monitoring the performance of the power company, the two power companies. They have expertise of engineering, accounting, and finance. So it's not just for the colleagues that has just joined us to take up the work. Next, Mr. Kenneth Leng. I want to follow up on 3030. My question was about illegal felling of incense trees. In your reply, you said in A and B, you set out the number of cases in the past five years. And in 2009, fifteen cases, number of prosecution, two. Twenty ten, it has increased to nineteen, and number of prosecution, nine. And in 2012, number of cases has increased to sixty-seven. That's multiplied, but number of prosecution stayed at twenty-nine. In 2013, number of cases, ninety-six. So it's a huge increase. However, number of prosecution, twenty-one only. And the penalty, 2009, the penalty is only imprisonment of two to four months. And recently, in 2014, we see that the penalty has increased from twenty-four months to forty-five months. Even with the increase in penalty, the number of cases of illegal felling of such precious trees has increased while number of prosecution has remained low. And what enforcement action will you take? How come the number of cases has increased, but the number of prosecution cases has dropped? How many people have you deployed to deal with such cases? Director. Thank you for the question. We're equally concerned about the situation. And this gives us a headache as well. You know, in the recent case, in order to apprehend the culprit, the police will have to fire their gun. So in recent years, these perpetrators don't operate in a stealth way. We see that in country parks, the number of cases involving incense trees have, has increased. We work with the police to deal with the cases. But don't forget that we're talking about rural areas. Those more accessible areas that are close to the road. All these trees have disappeared. And every year, we plant ten thousand trees, but it will take time for these seed, for these saplings to, to grow into big trees. But when it comes to prosecution, it depends on evidence. In order for successful prosecution, we need strong evidence. And in some cases, well, in these cases, we have arrested over a hundred people. If we invoke the forest and the country park ordinance, we're only talking about one year imprisonment and twenty-five thousand dollar fine. The police and the D F J and us have talked, have thought about charging different offenses, say, for example, theft or criminal damage or possession of offensive weapon, which will attract a maximum penalty of four years. Of course, in Hong Kong, we have, the judiciary is independent. So the penalty imposed will depend on the facts of the case. Sorry, I'd like to interrupt. So is it the police or the A F C D that enforce the law or both? You said that the perpetrators are armed. Then, well, will your staff be armed too, to protect themselves? Well, we, we have limited manpower. But when it comes to certain situations, say, for example, on the hillside, there is an illegal structure. It's very likely that we will engage the police as well. It's impossible for our staff members to carry weapons because there may be strong repercussions. I would like to, I'll talk about the secretary's speech and 264 about waste treatment. Phases one and two about the organic waste recycle center, the organic waste treatment center. And it also mentioned about the ten thousand tons of compost a year. What we can clearly see is that the ministry, the government cannot properly deal with it. The departments don't use the product from these treatment centers. Well, we are aware of your proposal of the landfills and the incineration. But this is also very important about the one billion dollar fund. I remember it was Mrs. Carrie Lam and the P S who spoke to us. But now I see it's fraught with inadequacies. The Steering Committee chaired by Carrie Lam is studying on assistance to recycling, to the recycling industry, safe recycle certification, improving the community recycling network, green procurement, et cetera. But I'd like to say that everything is on the drawing board. With all these inadequacies, you tell us to trust you that the recycling fund of one billion dollars will be used on development of the recycling industry. We remain unconvinced. But there is nothing else we can do. Previously, when we were vetting the proposal of plastic bag levy, we asked you about tackling waste at source. It's been five or six years, but nothing is done. You ask us to trust you. Give me more details.
Secretary. Mr. Chairman, Madame Chen. No, of course, there are a lot of outstanding problems. We would like to work together with members to resolve these problems. We do have a strategy, like food waste. At the beginning of this year, we have proposed a food waste and yard waste plan for Hong Kong 2014 to 2022. So we have a systematic approach to deal with all the such waste. Now, food waste could be turned into something useful in Hong Kong. And perhaps there will be a small quantity of compost produced. And we will work with users of compost. So there is a detailed plan now to spell out our steps. And the private sector could get involved too. I'm saying there are gaps. The one billion dollar, how are you going to use it? What can you tell us this year? No, nothing. It's a void. Secretary? Well, our undersecretary has said that this is a complex issue because there are different types of recyclable waste and what sort of support they need, maybe land, training, insurance, and so on. There are many aspects involved. That's why it takes time for us to do something. Now, I know my time is up, but can I just say this? I hope the secretary could give us something, give us something in writing. So give us something in writing. Don't just repeat what you said in the opening remarks. Next, Mr. Michael Tian. Thank you. EMB 265 and 269. Over the years, the government spent a lot of resources on reducing waste at source. But in 2012, the household waste, two thousand four hundred tons, 2010, and then 2012 has gone up to two thousand five hundred and thirty tons. So instead of number dropping, it's going up. In 2013, you stepped up publicity. You know, that big waste, it was such a funny look. But we don't have figures yet. We don't know where the food waste has dropped in quantity. And then last year, the government spent, wasted twenty billion dollars to retrofit the refuse collection vehicles, turn, they are turned into enclosed type. But so far, you only retrofitted about thirty vehicles. There are still over three hundred vehicles on the road that have not been converted or modified. Actually, last year already, I already reminded the secretary, you have to do a proper job at reducing, reducing waste at source, recycling waste, and so on. Now, if the government would actually do something and then we see the results, and it may be a lot less difficult for us to support the free landfills and one incinerator package. But then now, you're just telling the secretary, everything's been set in motion. It will take three, four, or even five years before we see any results. But then, the people ask whether we could take your words for it this time. Maybe we'll let you through this time. But maybe it will be a long time later, not even this term of Leshco, to take you to task if you don't deliver. Now, for the free landfills, Changkong, all thirteen hectares, Taekwuling, seventy hectares, Tumun, two hundred hectares. Now, if you deal with all three landfills by 2019, Hong Kong wouldn't be a city of waste. And we could then scrape through till 2030. Now, Batuun residents say the, the, the other landfills are just thirteen hectares or twenty hectares. But ours is two hundred hectares. Even the primary student would say, how come our landfill is three times bigger or even over ten times bigger than other landfills? Some have asked whether you could split that extension into two parts. The first time, you just extend it by a hundred hectares. So one hundred plus seventy plus ten, thirteen, but at least that would take you till 2014. So we could resolve 2024. Then we could at least address the immediate problems. And by then, we'll see how much the government would have done. So the merit of this proposal is that we're able to monitor what you're doing. And then the public would be convinced that you are committed to reducing waste. Now, you are seeking funding for the consultancy report. Would you consider doing two analyses? One is for two hundred hectares and the other is for two parts, one hundred hectares each. And if you have to do it in two steps, would there be duplication of resources? How much more would you have to spend? Whether it's technically feasible? So if you do such a study, it will be more comprehensive because there's, there's no way you could do without this option. He's got only ten seconds. I think they have to consider it later. As long as he said, he will consider it. On waste reduction, you know, it's a duty for everybody, not just the government. Everyone has a duty in reducing waste. But for the Tumun landfill, splitting it into two phases, I've talked to colleagues in terms of the works and the contract, there would be difficulties. Now, for the consultancy study, you're coming to seek funding for the consultancy study. Would you ask this consultant to consider the study, whether it's possible to split the extension into two phases? Or are you saying that there's no need to even do such a study? I think he's heard your question, whether he could answer that question on behalf of the consultant. No, he hasn't answered to me whether he will ask the consultant to do that study. I don't think he can answer you here. Would you consider asking the consultant to look at that other option? Have you heard that? Mr. Chairman, when it comes to making good use of public resources and infrastructure facilities for the Tumun landfill, as we said, we would reduce the size by some extent. There could be, I mean, the contract has to be one contract, although implementation could be by phases. So that means the answer is no. Thank you. I got it. Next, Mr. Chin Chung-wai Kai.
I'd just like to make some comments. Ms. Emily Lau asked about compensatory measures. Secretary, when you first posed, you talked to us, the Democratic Party, about landfills and waste recycling. At that time, we already stated our position clearly. We asked that you make compensation to the residents.
We asked that you make compensation to the residents. Just now, I heard your reply to Miss Emily Lau. But two days ago, in the news, it's reported, you said it's difficult. We're not talking about betterment only now. One and a half years ago, we already talked about it. And when you assumed pose, we did make that clear to you. If it cannot be done, it's most regrettable because there are such precedents all around the world. Maybe you tell us it's not okay. Some members visited Tokyo, they said there were such compensatory measures. Now, the one billion dollar recycling fund in the document said, in your opening remarks, you said you will come up with a plan by the end of the year. Now, with funds, usually you will invite applications, you will set the terms. That's the market mechanism. We know how it works in Hong Kong. But then for projects that loss-making, it may not be most effective to go through a market mechanism. Has the government considered setting up a company? So you would actually do the work yourself? For example, foot waste recycling. It's like when we were small, when we were young, you know, there were people collecting foot waste. No one does that now, of course. But would you consider setting up companies to run some of these businesses on your own? Secretary? For the recycling fund, there are different types of ways. Some, they have asked, the sector has asked for different support. Some may need a peer, others may need NAN or whatever. No, I'm not talking about specific types of ways. I'm talking about a mode of operation. You know, whether you let others do it or you set up a company to do it. Like for foot waste, you know, take that as an example. The government would use public resources to build foot waste processing plants. Yes, it may be a government act. Then we will discuss with you what's the degree of involvement on the part of the government and the sector, for instance. But for foot waste processing plants, now they're operated by the government through contracts. So the government is actively involved. But for recyclable waste, there may be different approaches. So we keep an open mind for different types of waste. Maybe there could be different approaches which are appropriate. Undersecretary or prime secretary? If I could just add, there are many different ways to deal with recycling of waste. Foot waste, for instance, there's a government infrastructure. We have the organic foot waste treatment center. And then we also have the producer, eco-producer responsibility scheme. We will soon be coming to Leshco to talk about waste electronic equipment. So it could be in a form of legislation, it could be a recycling facility. But it's a whole package. Like for the recycling of waste electronic equipment, there'll be a need for government's involvement because first we have to build the plant and then through charging recycling fees, then we could operate the plant. It's like plastics. Plastic is worth something. You know, plastic bottles are worth something because they could be recycled. But because of the situation in Hong Kong, no one is actually collecting plastic bottles. So the next stage of the discussion is about what sort of waste that could be recycled? Waste, plastic, metals, paper, whatever. Now, should we deal with plastic waste like we deal with waste electronic equipment? Or what about glass bottles? So we're talking about, are we going to approach recycling the same way? Or could the recycling fund help, you know, in the recycling of plastic? So it depends on each type of waste materials to be recycled. The approach must be targeted. Second round, Dr. Kenneth Chen, two minutes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I waited a long time. I'd like the secretary to talk about country parks. Many colleagues have asked about the country park enclaves. I'd like to ask a forward-looking question. I understand, going back to the Sai Wan Village. Now, in this financial year, would the government have any resources to help residents in Sai Wan Village? And then that could be a demonstration project. So that for other country park enclaves, maybe there are indigenous villagers involved. But the enclaves could be incorporated in a country park. While at the same time, you could encourage village development. Well, I will ask my colleague to give you the details. But under the country marine parks, we have set up a working group. We would like to take Sai Wan Village as a president and we will put in resources to promote development there.
Director, thank you for the question. Our line of thinking is similar to Mr. Chen's. Well, whether it's, instead of being confrontational, it's better to be for us to be working together. We now have a conceptual plan. We will conduct further consultation with the area to improve it. We'll consult the district council role, committee, and villagers when it comes to the work involved. Since a part of the land is government land, I believe that the department involved will have the resources to improve the environment. Say for example campsite, sites where people go in stargaze to clear the weed. And there are other complicated issues, say for example shops or hostels or bed and breakfast. Well, in these areas, the government cannot get involved. We have discussed with the EPD about the possibility of using the environment fund to take forward such activities. Hopefully, we will have more ideas and a clearer idea in the middle of this year. If that is the case, there may be progress by the end of this year. If it is successful, I think it can be extended to other enclaves. So I hope that there is a chance for those cases that has gone through the town planning department or not yet to be reconsidered. We will resume tomorrow at half past eight. Thank you.